All right, this meeting is called over. Seven o'clock, Cambridge, you all please stand. Thank you everybody for coming on. Rule of the agenda, ten minutes of previous meeting.
Five seconds.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Are there any comments from the audience? Dana? Stand up here, just stand behind that chair there. Yep, so we have to do, we did speak with him Tuesday here, about two hours. So, we have to do a process to vacate, vacate that property first. And then we can, was, was after the vacate? We vacated and then-
Yeah, he's working on that, on that paperwork for that. So we'll need to vacate the property, a city property. And then have a public hearing for that, and then we can issue a new, issue a new deed. But he's working on that, we discussed it with them at our meeting, so.
The three-way up there? Yes.
And I was wondering, I know there was nothing ever went through the council here, through that sign in front of my place, to go from a stop to a deal, and was wondering if there's any way to help with speed and traffic coming in, and maybe put that stop in there, and also have one on the northbound side coming in before they get to the corner? To get them so that they're slowing down, because the other day I watched two bikers coming down the hill and they're not stopping at the bottom like they should, and coming through there, somebody's gonna end up getting and I just think that, also with the speed they're coming down through there, there's a couple of kids that walk down that street daily going down to the snack shack that I've seen one time, both of them about wiped out for a vehicle coming around. Just wondering if we can get them to stop before they go into that corner, if that would help. What are the names of those streets? What's that? South Line. South Line, like Center. Center's the east-west road.
So Joe, maybe you could help us out, Nate was talking to us about a study, you guys have, we were gonna do it up there at the north end up there, you guys got some grant money to do studies on? Sitting somewhere?
Well, GTSD, state bureaus and state gives us to work overtime.
Yep.
I've been on vacation.
Okay.
So we, I, we told the officers to
Yeah, I think he was gonna do a little bit up there at that, we're gonna have that three-way stop at, and then-
Yeah.
Maybe we can look at-
Were we gonna do that? I thought that was for the, at the bike trail, that we wanted the-
Well, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
I thought you were talking about the north on Ninth Street.
On Eighth? Eighth and Race is where we're gonna do that study at? I'm just saying, maybe we could have it down there too. They could sit on the end of Vine and observe people coming into town, if that seems to be, be an issue there.
I know these guys enjoy their job, but I, I know that also to take is a couple of tickets in town on somebody especially the one, they're coming around Race and on the Vine, and it comes into that corner there, they're not, I mean, you guys aren't sitting there, they're already slowing down.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and, and I don't know where you're gonna have to set up, because you guys sit over there at the bike trail where it's obvious, maybe if you moved up somewhere, because of other than that, I mean, somehow, it's gonna have to, gotta learn to be self-aware a little bit more and actually stop and stop. And I don't know if the city could help out and paint stop lines, like a lot of other communities have, at the stop sign, but also letting them know, hey, this is where you need to stop at, coming to end of the stop sign. I don't know if that would help with that or not.
I don't think paint's gonna last very long on that.
Well, if you're not stopping for a stop sign, you're gonna get stopped for a green light. Right, I understand, but it makes it easier for him to write a ticket when they roll past the stop. Yeah, that's not a real good place.
So when you, when you observe people, are you able to write tickets then also, or is it just, you're just observing the area at that time? During that study period? When you're in that study?
But I know fall's coming, and we'll have heavy traffic coming back through the residential area again, and I know we've been hit that council once before and asked about the truck route being and I'd like to maybe that to get on the table for next month, as something that the city wants to have is removing the truck route through the residential portion, especially the amount of kids that are on that street, and get ready to get on the bus.
Okay.
So, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sure we're, my name is Trent Miller, I'm the chairman of the new planning and zoning committee. And I thought I'd come in each month and kind of tell you what we've been up to.
Yeah.
We've met twice, we've got a formation meeting, and then we're kind of trying to figure out who are we, and what are we, and all that jazz, so I plan on bringing next month, like a one pager. And I think it's gonna be a whole lot around the plan for growth in an orderly manner. That means, no, but it's not, we're in charge of the growth, we're not gonna make happen, it's just that if it ever happens, we need to put all that stuff out. Then there's also a bunch of stuff on the code that says, our basic plan, have one group of plan. Oh, and any new subdivision or this, those are the big things we should expect to see. And along those lines, I'd like to also take to the planning and zoning committee the concept of building permits and inspections and stuff. I think we should look at Elkar, Colo and Maxwell, because we're all very similar in size. Believe it or not, Elkar's eight fifty now, they passed it. So, hope to bring that back to this room soon, so watch for that as well.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing with this whole stop sign thing. Kind of control of that whole quarter down there, that the garbage guys have went from one garbage truck. Last I counted, it was twelve. So they're, they're, obviously they're going in, out of town, twelve, twelve trucks coming back into town. And then we've got Precision Underground also is growing, growing nearly every day, because trucks do this. We're starting to see a lot more of that type of traffic coming in and out of town. I know for the garbage guys, they come in with the roll-offs, pretty often every day, all day long. Back and forth, and I guess, drop them. And that kind of thing, so we're getting, we're getting just a lot more, not congestion by any means yet, but we're getting a lot more vehicle traffic out there, and it, it's hard to get those guys to stop. You've got a full load on, they've got ten, twelve thousand. It's hard for them to stop, and bicyclers absolutely do not stop. They, as hard as they can, they try to get the traffic to stop. Or let, and I've seen myself, I've decided to stop complaining about it. And just be an observer, but I just see a lot, a lot of bicycles stopping.
It's pretty obvious. I mean, I've seen the cop car sitting there, and having pulled down through the trail, and I didn't stop. That just stops, so I mean, maybe just, somebody should be getting out there, and it's not.
Joe, how do you guys see that? Because I was, I was going out of town one day, and a car did stop on the road to allow the bicyclers go by.
Yeah, they're, that's stopping because the crowd pushing. I mean, that's dangerous. Somebody should please, bicycles need to stop, and there's technically you could give them the citation, then ready to stop.
I think the stop ahead sign is laying in the grass up on top of that bike trail, it's not even up. Is there any other comments? Moving on. Prue goal of the list of claims and receipts. I got some questions.
Well, we had a couple of additions that just came in. One was for a return check. And then this one just came from Iowa Prison Industries, that woman to add to our list of claims.
Why don't you just say that loud enough so that everybody can just add that to their-
Oh, to their- We had one more from the Iowa Prison Industries that came in today. That will be adding to our list of claims for one sixty fifty-six. And then we had a Yeah, I think that. Iowa Prison Industries. One sixty fifty-six.
Additional time, oh, so you need to add it to your list.
And then we had a return check.
So that's Fidelity Bank.
For fifty-seven forty-nine for Fidelity Bank.
And then a correction.
And a correction on Ag Source.
Number one on your list.
The first one on your list. We hadn't received the bill and it came in today, so the first fee was for thirteen seventy-five instead of thirteen fifty. And the next one was five hundred and three dollars. For a total of five sixteen seventy-five. I think so. I think that was it for, what did you have a question on?
We'll start here with the number twenty-four. For five hundred, what is that?
That was a meeting that you had.
Yeah, that's just his final expenses since the first of the year.
He wasn't gonna do any more than that, right? Wasn't gonna do deed, nothing.
Well, I don't know, it doesn't say that on there, but I'm assuming, I assume that's our final bill from that. Let's see, have him do something else.
So his business with us is strictly by contract only? You reach out to him and ask him to do something with those special project? And all of our normal legal stuff is gonna be subject caps.
Yeah, I think he needs to get a letter saying that he is.
That was conference with mayor. Yeah, July.
No.
No, it happened on one seven to two four.
So I think Deb is with me, because he's already filled us once for a meeting that we already had, that already had, this must have been a year with me, Deb.
That's, we were with him at this meeting, was this the second meeting, because he said-
We've already been billed for that one.
Louis had already billed you once for a meeting, not for that.
The January, not for the one that we went to, but those earlier ones, we've already been billed for. I have those on-
This should be a final bill, basically, yeah. Yeah, he hasn't billed for anything since that February meeting.
Then I have the, what's the municipal supply, or the grant?
Municipal supply.
Oh, okay, so that's related to our American Rescue Plan Act, it's for more of the readers.
Oh, that- Yeah. Dale, you said you're, how many of those meters now?
Almost sixty thousand.
And they're waiting for a total of like three hundred or something?
Yeah, so we purchased the laptop and we purchased the software probably about six months ago, maybe, something like that.
So that was eighty-one of them were shipped. Four hundred and thirty-five of these as well. Shipping them in increments as they come in, because they've been back ordered.
What, what is the, the double for the postage deal here, what was that?
We split it between water and sewer, right? Postage eighty-eight, when you split it in half.
Yeah, that's for the usual.
The two different accounts.
Okay. Is it normally that much every month?
Postage just went up.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I went over one check, and I had this, remember I had to have you come in and-
I just had a question here on the well-marked Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's usually four, four thousand, it's about eighteen fifty more.
We're catching up on, on Susan's. Because they didn't have me on the first month that I was eligible.
Okay.
Because we usually pay for insurance a month ahead.
Okay.
Question on the post, I guess. Do we, if somebody pays online, do we set those fees? You have to add like four percent if you pay with credit card on that.
They pay the fees, we don't pay the fee.
Right.
Yes, we don't get the fees. We don't get the fee, all pay gets the service.
Gets the fee, that fee.
Okay, because I'm just kind of wondering if it almost be worth it to start heading digital with, or at least give people that option, like a lot of cities, you know? To where we're not getting our cards in the mail, we're not sending them to residents, our utility bill? And so don't know if that would help with the postage, you know?
But you've got some people in town that aren't gonna-
Which I'm saying, you can't fully just say-
But give them that option, but give them that option.
It's the only bill I pay. That's not paperless and not just automatic taking. Which I know not everybody likes that. Right. But I think maybe that's something, if postage continues to soar, like we're seeing, and maybe something gets considered down the road.
Trisha looked into that before we did the all pay, and it's, it's a pretty hefty fee, you know, to do that, but.
So you, you do the online thing for the city warrant, or no?
Yeah. Because I won't pay the fee, it's like four point five percent.
Right.
And, you know, Alliance doesn't charge that, all my other bills don't charge that fee, so that's why I pay those. Um, well, yes, and so, we're, we're charged that fee. Everybody sneaks it in, but it's also a complete, it's-
Somebody pays, it's either- Somebody, somebody pays for that service, it's either the company, and they pass that along, or these, like on our all pay.
Yeah, and I'm fully, everybody gets their fee. But it just may be worth looking into, postage-wise versus who pays that fee? A lot of credit card, or, you know, some of these utility companies like Alliance, put it back on the customer and not on us, so it just may be something to look at and look at in the future, head that way, especially if prices are gonna keep up like crazy.
Okay.
Any further discussion? For claims and receipts?
Five seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Mother reports, treasures report.
So you have two treasures report, one is a corrected from June that we talked about last month. Because our numbers didn't quite work out. So it's a corrected one, and then you also have July.
July, you should have another one. It should cross out the top, and it says revised, because our balances weren't equaling last council meeting, so we got them all budgeted and okay.
So this one's-
This is the current one, this is the revised one.
Well, that's the difference.
Yeah. Do we have a big difference in the amounts? Was there a payment that we had out that made a big difference, or?
Or what?
So, it was one point four, and went down to one point two eight, the big, just the difference in bill.
It's, it's probably under that, under TIF, it's payments made probably on the Opera House pay request. I think that's where you're gonna notice the biggest.
Dispersed, look at here, we only had forty-four.
We pay for insurance for the years.
The big one on the TIF.
We have street repairs for the year.
Street repairs, yep.
Insurance payments, workers' comp payments. Over a million dollars is not a normal amount that we typically would have in our treasures report. We only have it right now because of those big projects. But it's gonna go down, as we're, as we're paying for those.
You said it's not normal above a million?
No.
So what's normal?
I, yeah, I don't know, less, when I first started, about two hundred and fifty thousand was a really good balance to have on hand, so.
Any discussion over treasures report? Budget balance report?
We're still working on getting caught up with that one, so you don't have that.
Okay. Bank reconciliation?
Yeah.
Police report, is there any further discussion on any of those?
No motions required.
No, no, just make sure everybody had time to get over. Are there any correspondence?
Yes. Start with five.
So we can move on to standing committees while we look at that.
Reports from standing committees.
Yep, reports from standing committees, water?
I had a new leak show up in the filter today, in the raw water pipe that goes into the ducts in the top. It has about three big holes in it.
Over here?
It had, had that had nothing to do with the acid. Just run it out, so I'm gonna try contacting somebody tomorrow about getting it over there.
You got anything for the sewer and solid waste?
Haven't heard anything, everybody that's needed to be contacted about her has been, goes back to everything.
So we received- We've got that under old business to kind of talk about, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, we just hang on.
Yeah. Any more on roads? Did you ever think, like putting any more, any more rock on that race street there? I mean, what do you think on that? I mean, when it's a hundred degrees out and the motorcycle comes around a corner and it's pretty greasy, that's my only-
We threw sand at it twice, and we're getting a little bit less than that. It seems to firm it up pretty good, but if they ever do the streets this early, we're gonna have the chips falling.
Yeah. I didn't know if that's something we can get out of the quarry up there, can we get, can we get those chips? Those roadstone chips? Got a cemetery, park and library?
Reparations were to be turned in, and they're looking at those this Thursday, we are not submitting a repaired application here, we are submitting one next year. And timeline right now, the end date for that, you finish for us, it's gonna be fifteen July of next year. That's it, we gotta, little a dog, listen to the project, there's a couple of things that have been suggested so far, but I, I don't know, a week after the meeting is, why is it? And I think we're gonna let the constituents drug, bug ya, man.
What does the grant cover?
Reparates cover outdoor recreation.
Okay, so, a park?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
The original intent was to do with archery range, but that's, that, that was illegal.
Yeah.
Bridge Community Forestry Grant Program, I'm assuming you've got something with that?
Yes, but that was in some of the new business, is that what we wanted to wait on, the forestry grant?
No, I don't think so, um. Okay, so this is a grant that's available for damaged trees from the Dora, replacing trees from the trees. And, yes, Dale would like a couple of maple trees, right, in the park? So we're looking for somebody to pursue this grant, write this grant.
Is that the paperwork right there?
Yeah, this is the Dora Show Community Forestry Grant Program.
I have it.
Total of, do we have a second copy of this?
Um, no, but it's an email, so we can forward it to you.
Forward email to Mike?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are those for the two replacement ones in there?
How many trees can we get on that?
Well, it says a total of two hundred and fifty thousand in funds will be made available to local government, schools and service organizations. Um, grants ranging from five hundred to five thousand to use for the purchase and planning of trees.
Did you have a problem with me in the process writing this grant, including school property? With it as well? Yeah, I figured the more tree coverage that we have, the likelihood is that we can get favorable rule of law.
We have to compensate five hundred dollars.
Two trees not gonna cost more than bucks.
Yeah, actually.
You'd be surprised how much trees are.
I will, I will-
So where you wanna do some at the school?
Where?
Out here, the school out here?
So you're looking at maybe a joint grant? So you're looking at a joint grant?
I, it'd be the difference between applying to two trees for the city of Cambridge and applying for grant money to cover twenty-five trees for the city of Cambridge, but part of it would be-
Well, were those damaged? These are new trees.
They, they are, we have trees that are damaged, plus we have trees that are getting smoked by Emerald Ash Bowl.
Because that might be a different grant program, but it's not related to the Dora.
We had Dora damage for a pretty-
So we can focus on the Dora show part of it.
Okay.
So I think we talked a little bit, Dale, maybe about Ryan Slater, maybe being able to help with that. So I think we talked a little bit, Dale, maybe about Ryan Slater, maybe being able to help with that, because he works for the forestry.
Yeah, that's like, it's not his.
That's not his area. Okay, all right, nevermind.
Doesn't grow.
Yeah.
This Iowa Living Roadways Community Visionings, is that a, something that's on your plate you want to throw my way? I know, I know nothing about it.
The Iowa Living Roadways?
Yeah.
So it's another information that came through. Um, and what's in your community? Several times it's been talked about, about the bike path and wanting to make like a parking area and stuff down here. This is for visioning in the community.
Is there an electronic thing that I can? Use to reference materials and information?
Uh, this just came in the mail, I believe this one.
And I think we've had emails about it too. Isn't that something you talked about at the story of economic development?
I think it is.
Yeah.
So this came in the mail, this one did. Is that something you were already looking into or?
I could share what I have.
You want to make a note?
Sure.
Together.
Sure.
Did he need that? Did he have that?
Do, we don't need this for anything. Do we? Can he, Mike have this?
No, I don't think, yeah, we don't need it.
First room five.
Doc. Use your head.
Okay.
Hang on a second.
Okay.
I noticed that this is later on down the road here. I will have. Nominees for. Cemetery Park Board and Library Board finalized by our. Whatever actually we need to take. My two cents, that's what I was telling you there.
For what boards?
Cemetery Park and Library.
He's claiming nominees for those boards. Cemetery Park and, and then Library.
And then, when do you think? All right, is there any further discussion on that? We'll move on to the financial economic development record.
One more month and then somebody else will take over.
Okay.
So here's what happened. So Ames was working with US Bank and Ames. Um, they did the same thing that I originally did, thought we were on the same page, put in for a business credit card. Um, gave them our tax ID number and everything, but just put me as the business owner. So waited a couple of weeks, got kicked back as we were denied. So I gave up on them. I called Ankeny last week and they were like, oh yeah, we deal with this all the time. So I'm now dealing with Ankeny, Susan, Deb. I'll be in contact probably Tuesday, Wednesday to set up a meeting. It may be over the phone or Zoom with the actual banker that's there. Um, because they definitely need not just our tax ID number, but actual like. City paperwork and stuff so that they can run the credit report through the city, not just me as the representative. Um. So that's where we're at with that. I have a new banker in Ankeny, so the US Bank in Ankeny, not Ames. Um, so like I said, we'll be in contact.
But it's still a US Bank in Ankeny?
US Bank. Uh, cause that's, I called some other places and they were just kind of like, the place government does, that's US Banks, like kind of niche. Um, so once we meet with them, get that process started, they will need. Um, it was kind, we'll have to clarify. I don't think it's right at the beginning, but anybody who needs a credit card. We're going to need full name, birthday, address and social security number. So we start gathering. And it won't go against anybody's credit report, but they just because that, because they want the card, they have that information.
So I know through Huxley, they don't give every person a credit card. They keep the, like a master in the office and they come and check it out and then you don't have to.
Which we could do that.
Validate every person's name and all that information.
Yeah.
Some people's got their names on. Joanne told me she's got a name on her card.
On, yeah, but like on some of their general ones, yeah, certain accounts.
Check it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on the position, like in Ames, I have.
City of Cambridge or. Yes, yes.
They would prefer though, in most situations, obviously your name's on it.
Right.
And each person's assigned, um, which not only for the bank itself, but you know, the auditors and stuff. So it's not like. Bobby can go out and buy stuff and we try to blame it on Dale. So I think with especially. Especially with this new cards, if we need, the bank would prefer that each person, because it's super easy. Whoever, you know, my name would be on the account, but then we can swap it to like.
Well, Gloria wants one for the library.
Well, yeah, but then whoever's in charge of the account, it's very easy if we have a position change or whatever, just say their card's done. Get this new person one. So that's the preferred method.
Okay.
So, but I'll be in touch this week about setting up a meeting so we can normalize this. Good luck. If this doesn't work, then I'm throwing my hands up in the air. Sat on the phone too long with predators, so.
Thank you.
So, but we're getting there. So the, the Ankeny one just seems like they got it down. The need, so.
Any further discussion on that? Move on to communications. Huxley Communications Calendar.
So we received a letter. Um, Huxley Communications is going to do a calendar. Um, they've partnered with businesses. They have limited calendar space. Um, so the software is available to the first thirty-three businesses that respond. It's at no cost to any business. Um, if you're interested in being on their calendar, we need to respond to them by August nineteenth.
Is it just business or?
Um, opportunity to be a featured local business in our communications calendar is all it says. So businesses that they're wanting.
Okay, so not necessarily for the city event.
Well, I don't know. They sent it to.
Yeah.
They sent it to everybody who lives on account, because I got one at home.
Okay. So I guess we're not really a business, so maybe this doesn't apply to us.
Is it for, it's not that for a second, sorry. Is it for specific events or is it?
It just says opportunity to be a featured local business.
I mean, if anything, why wouldn't we advertise this business center? I mean, we're a business in that aspect. We're renting space.
Most of it, the calendar has the business and the people that kind of the business, so.
Right, like Huxley Communications or staff. Um, that type of a thing. I mean, I can follow up with Connie at Huxley Communications. And ask her specifically.
Any further discussion on that? Rural enrichment grant, electronic sign.
Okay, I've got three, three businesses that got bids from eighteen thousand, seventeen thousand and I think sixteen thousand. So the thing, if we want, we've got a possibility to get a twenty thousand dollar grant to replace that. Sign over here in the post out of the slot. So if we apply for this grant, we could get electronic sign that we run by wifi. So we can do different options. So I'm working on that.
And you want to turn the base?
I was thinking if we turned it so when you're driving by, you see it instead of having to look at it. And move it, I don't know if we can move it through the road or if they, with the, do we have to get permission? I don't know. If we move that sign to our road.
Yeah.
We'll move it wherever we want.
Well, you probably can't like right at the street.
Yeah, behind the sidewalk.
Obstruct the corner, can obstruct the view of a corner.
So that grant application deadline is September one. So. Yeah, it shouldn't be too hard. We've been working on electronic sign for.
Yeah.
Four years.
So you're filling out the application?
Yeah. I just need to figure out which.
Which person? Which person to go with? We put it on the work session?
Yeah, I'll come with some suggestions and we can pick out one. We don't have to order. I don't think so.
Suggestions from these other three places that we got the bids from?
Yeah.
That we're saying.
Get pictures from them. We'll pick one up and apply for the grant.
Okay.
I mean, do we want a pole, do we want a nice brick around it?
It doesn't matter on how much money you get from.
We get twenty thousand, we get twenty thousand.
Okay.
So we have to match. If we have to match, he said two to one, so we have to have ten thousand. I've already got twenty-five hundred from the. Story County Economic Development Group. And they said they give us another twenty-five hundred, so across the city, five thousand. Which isn't bad. But let me check on all that and make sure.
So for our work session, do you want to talk about design, what, what specifically?
Poles or brick? It'd kind of nice to have brick to match the city center.
You would need to maybe have some inputs on there, because whatever the maintenance is of it.
Around the sign, which, well, we can talk about it. Would you rather have poles or your brick around there?
Doesn't matter. Goal, paper.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Good?
So we have the recordings of the meetings are now available. I was able to get the work session recording on YouTube. Um. Right now, the recording is unlisted, so only those with the exact link can view it. I can't remember if we've talked about if we want to make the recordings available after the meetings to the general public, if we want to share them on the website or on Facebook. We can do whatever.
So do you want to, do you want us to make a decision right now?
You can think about it.
I think that's. Work session. What's the point of recording?
Maybe that's full transparency, just kind of meeting agenda. You have your meeting agenda, you have the meeting, so.
I'll put it up.
So we can put a link on the website where to look for.
Just means Susan has to watch her links.
Yeah, they can be saved on YouTube.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? Moving on to old business, wastewater treatment plant project, the stream study. Good? Still good?
We got an email, says they're following up to see if you've received a bid or invoice for the damaged baffles yet.
Is that a no? A no?
Any update, they would greatly appreciate.
Who's they?
I cap. I cap.
Okay, so what, anything on the stream study? Is it, have they started working on that yet? I think they're, I thought they were waiting for low water, which is what. I don't think it's going to get much lower than it is right now, but. Why don't you talk to Steve about that? And then also you can give him this information about the, um, yeah. For the insurance?
Okay.
Need further discussion on wastewater treatment project? Moving on to the Cambridge Opera House, project update. Don't like that. We're waiting on some, what's wrong with the gas meters? Gas electric, what do they need numbers now on how to?
So that last email, and I forwarded it to Lance.
Yeah.
Lance got back to me, basically he's still waiting to hear from some of the other contractors to get back and he will forward that information. Um, we let them know that we have not assigned any addresses yet, that, that. We haven't done that until we get all this work and stuff in line and then we will assign addresses. But I'm still waiting for more correspondence from Lance.
I mean, I just, it's going to be particularly important for breaking down the electrical meters and. That sort of thing.
It sounded like on there. Yeah.
How did America ever build anything in every project?
The old roof is still not sealed yet. We're, it's on a waiting list with that, with the guy that's going to do it. It's up to the gas meters and electric meters now. When you see them going, then we can move forward on the spreadsheet, but until then, just keep rolling back every week. Been a process. Is there any more discussion on project update? Um, there is a meeting tomorrow, nine o'clock over there. For anybody?
Yes, everyone's.
Yep. It's, it's a lot done. There's a lot drywall done.
I'm excited to see the painters have been in there.
And they've been moving some things. Cabinets are all moved to the rooms where it'd be put in now, so the one big spot. Kind of sealed up some of the mold issues. In there. Yep.
There's a cleaning procedure that goes with it and then seal it. They had. Yes.
They did ask for, Corey did ask for a request to have them come back and check it again, just to make sure it was.
Good.
And that was two weeks ago. We still have a concrete issue with the very front where it says.
Opera House.
That whole bottom ledge, that concrete is gone. They're still testing it, trying to find somebody to be able to match the concrete.
There's a metal rod in behind it, but you can't just stick any concrete in there, so.
That'd be the same compound of what that concrete was. So we're working on that now, should be. Lance wasn't there two weeks ago either, so. We did have his info. Process for sale of the Opera House. Still kind of a couple months out on that or?
Right, we talked about it a little bit at the work session and when Greg Picklapp was here last week, we kind of. Put that on his radar. He's with Ames Chamber, working for Story County Border Supervisor. Um, so there's a waiting list for like residential.
Residential, he said.
Um.
People looking.
And, yeah, and, and he can help with, with business too. Um, at least with renting. Um, we did talk a little bit about maybe selling, but he'll be a good resource. Um, for that, when we get, get to that point. But it's on his radar, so he should know what we're talking about.
Follow up more with me?
Yeah.
That's Picklapp?
Picklapp, P I K L A P P. He was at a meeting a few months ago.
I think one of the things, this isn't low income housing.
No.
This is regular income.
Right.
So we can charge what people are charging for parks or if we have to.
Hopefully it is.
Hopefully we sell it.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not low income, but it's affordable income. I believe this what the application says on it.
No, it doesn't.
The eighteen to nineteen application doesn't say that in there, but it does.
Not the grant, not the one that gets the grant. Affordable. I don't think it's yet.
You're supposed to be talking about the first application that it was for. So it's supposed to be.
I'm talking about the housing application.
But what it was supposed to be for. Supposed to be affordable housing. Is what the, is what the application for that building said.
Oh, for the.
Affordable, not, not low income, but just affordable housing. But not high end.
But the housing grant is setting, we're trying to attract people to Cambridge to live.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Affordable could be fifteen hundred for some people.
Any further discussion on the process of sale? We want city code update, state building code.
This is the piece of the double, this is deferring to state requirements, and we not having our own selected codes.
Right, and we talked to the city attorney about that at our meeting with him last week, so he's gonna be looking into that.
So when he gets all the code updated, do we get a copy to put on the web?
Yeah, we'll get it.
Like a PDF if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah. That doesn't say unofficial across.
That's true.
And copy in depth at the bottom.
At the beginning of that.
Yeah.
They did that on purpose.
No. Any further discussion on that? Moving on to the American Rescue Act Plan, Story County application.
How do we, how do we start getting this money, or how?
Where do we put it?
Two hundred fifty thousand for the, the chambers at the storm sewer project. So we have to talk to Leanne Harder, she's in part of it, and you guys have done some stuff with Leanne. You know, if we, for the extending the storm sewer, do we have to pack the Fox engineering to get?
Are they extending the storm sewer?
You have to talk to Fox.
Do we have to talk to Fox engineering about?
It sounds like because it's federal money for government, federal thing, then it almost has to be.
Okay.
There has to be.
I think you would want it to be, anyway, we don't wanna be just throwing.
No.
Pipe in the ground without, you know, having a plan for.
You have to bid that out.
Where it goes and, and all of that, and making it consistent with what we already, with what we already have.
I think my means that this federal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have to have an estimate of the cost in order to apply for the project?
We've already got two hundred fifty thousand.
So we've got the money. The money's waiting for us to have a project to spend it on, so.
So it's part of the.
We need the engineers to come up with a cost.
Right.
Come up with a plan, and then put it out for bid.
And put it out in the, yeah.
So who's speaking with the engineers?
Bid.
I would think Dale would be, but unless you.
So they're gonna add a curve together.
Well, we need to, okay, so we need to get our whole application financing in, in place. So we've got some government stuff that we have to complete, and we're gonna work with, so they've hired, well, they're working with Randy Feenstra's office.
Who's they?
To work the Story County, Leanne Harder. To kind of push that paperwork through on behalf of the communities that, that.
Leanne is the RPA person for Story County.
What? Leanne?
Leanne, she, she was the plan, ARPA director. So maybe we need to get with her.
Find out the process.
With this, with this ARPA funding, is there a drop dead date to have it paid back, I mean, to have the projects completed?
I think it's July, was it July of next year, or?
Don't remember seeing it.
They know we should put that on the work session.
A work session, ARPA.
Would Leanne be willing to come to a work session and explain that to us, or do it Zoom?
She doesn't have time to.
She should do it by Zoom.
Yeah, we can talk about it later.
Okay.
I don't think we're anywhere, we're not, we're not close to, you know, getting the actual, and we've gotta find out how, if this is a reimbursable grant. So we spend the money first, or if it's, or if it's upfront. I don't know the answer to that either yet, but.
Well, you said the money's there.
It's our money. I don't know how it works, so I don't know how the grant stays set.
Yeah, how it's, how it's.
This is for.
Would Leanne know?
Oh, yeah. But we have to talk to her.
Yeah.
We've done this before, though, we have a set of steps that we follow.
It changes every time they do a project.
This is the American Rescue Plan, I saw the difference.
Yeah, and there, and there are certain rules that are associated with that. The other projects that we've done with the federal government have been FEMA funded. And that's FEMA disaster funded, and that's a whole different. That's a, that's a different process. Different requirements. They're wanting us to go through a registration with the federal government, which we have not done before. The fire department has, but the city has not.
Can we put this on the work session then, for Monday?
Well, we come two.
Two me, two Mondays away.
To do, to do what, I guess? What do you wanna talk about?
Don't think we oughta, I mean, I don't even know where we're wanting to put this yet. I mean, I don't know where you're running. Fight down, or storms, or I don't have a sense where down.
Well, we applied for Race Street.
Race Street.
On Race Street.
To continue with that drain, that big drain tile project that we did with FEMA money after flooding in two thousand and ten. So it's just extending that north. It ends, right, where does it end right now?
Right now, right behind the shop, and where Sixth Street is, it's entry.
Ten. You wanna take it all the way to?
North seven, probably. There's a driveway that goes back to Eddie Gerst, he doesn't wanna get off the north side of that.
Right.
So that's, that's parallel or in line with where the Robs live?
Not near, too far up that way.
Too far?
Right by the duplex on the corner of Eighth and Race.
Ten four. And then where does it go? I mean, that, that's the extent of its intake, and then it, it all runs to the water this way?
Yeah, it connects with our existing.
Well, the engineer will be able to tell us if it's possible.
Right.
That's what we applied for.
Any further discussion on the storm sewer project? City staffing, city boards and commissions?
We kinda already did it. This was kind of the place we're gonna talk about, like the plans, only meetings that have taken place and.
I haven't heard of the employee handbook stuff since I came back from vacation, so I will light a fire under that.
Connie Sepkus, she reviewed it, reviewed one of them, Slater one, really liked it, thought it was really well. Ended that off the bar. Has it now?
You have a copy of it?
I didn't bring it with me. I wonder, does Kenny have a PDF of it? On, on you know it?
I don't think so. I think she just went through it.
Oh, okay, she just got it.
Mrs. Davis. The clerk over there?
What are they looking for? Slater's.
Employee handbook.
Kenny went through Slater, Hexley, and Ainge, and found that Slater was the most. Up to date.
Places like. Places like.
And Slater just stepped in, in December twenty twenty one, so.
Some of the smaller towns that are similar to us. They get there. Oh, that's a really good idea. We should, let us know what you find.
Even Elper.
You do the work.
Owen, Calsberg, Zering. That was. I'll relay.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on that? State auditor, final report?
So we've done the exit interview, reviewed comments, and replied to those, so the final report is all that's, that's remaining on that, so.
Did you love us?
He didn't hate us.
Pretty good.
Isn't he kind of a poker face?
He didn't come in, we did it by phone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. That's pretty good. Just little things. And you guys got back to him on most of those so far?
Yes, Deb got that all sent back to him.
Could do. All right, moving on to new business, nuisance abatement process. So we did talk to the new attorney about this. He was gonna give us a format of what he looks at when he does nuisance abatement and send that over. Did he send anything over yet?
Not on, not on abatement, no.
So, yeah, just trying to get that process there a little more simplified and downward.
So he's, he's working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Send over his, what he uses, so he's familiar with it.
Did he indicate anything about how they, his process?
Nope, he's just gonna, he's just gonna send over.
Okay.
His forms, we can kind of fill in the blank and use them, and then he's familiar with his, so. Better. So is there any more discussion on the process, questions?
So how soon after we get those forms, can we start sending out letters?
As soon as we can fill in somebody's name on them. Name and address.
Mental list.
I have a list.
That's all right, cause you guys understand, they're gonna, you know, we gotta give them a date to come in, so. All are coming in, as long as everybody understands that, you know, it's not just a couple people show up or whatever, it's gonna be everybody.
They set up a meeting with the council.
Yep, we, we actually make a date for them to come in, do their due diligence. So.
Okay.
Fine, I'm coming. Yeah.
I guess my only question, I know in one situation, uh, that has come up, is it very clear kind of outlines? Cause we have one property that's got a ton of parking now everywhere, but when I drove by the other day, they're parking their semi truck in their front yard too, with no gravel.
So that's.
So, you know, I just could see, if we don't have really clear defined lines, so I could see it.
There is in the book. It tells you. It's in the book. I mean, going around the corner, there's some, maybe a camper in the boat there too.
Cause I know that semi truck parks in the front yard all the time, since I've moved here, so as long as we're fair.
Yep.
Across the entire.
All the way around the block.
The thing is, so you can't define every.
No.
I mean, every situation, it cannot be defined. There's just no.
But in that section, there's three houses sitting right next to each other, and every one of them has something that they're doing, that's, you know.
Against, and violation.
Every one of them, so. It's, it's gonna be all free.
And, and, and we understand, we're not doing this to be harsh, or to be unneighborly, or to try to be the man. It's, it's about.
I think they understand that too.
Well, and, and I think the way we word our letters and the way we, we employ our communication, has to understand we're doing this in a neighborly fashion. We want what's best for pinch. All right, and we, we want it to look nice. We don't want there to be safety issues. We don't want it to, you know, start the dominoes falling, because if you start letting some of that go, then the next thing you know, this happens, and this happens, and then we're a world of hurt.
So do we still have a courtesy letter then? And Joe, do you guys hand out the courtesy letter? Do I hand out it?
We have a courtesy.
Do you guys have a courtesy letter?
Yeah, we have a courtesy letter, we also have a formal notice.
Okay.
Citation.
Don't mind getting the courtesy. Do you have that courtesy letter, PDF?
We have one.
Okay.
And actually, a city attorney was in favor of that.
You do that.
Yeah, doing the courtesy thing first.
Sure.
Have so many days to.
Establishing that and creating a precedent for doing that. That way goes a long ways towards what, what I talked about one time, about creating an absolute, who wanna stay, who wanna do this.
Absolutely.
Those people often get something to commit.
Yep.
We talked about that at planning zone, that we have to first make the city look nice, attract our people.
Yep.
Make it a nice license fee.
So we wanna move on to chapter fifty and one forty-two. One twenty-four.
Well, those are nuisance chapters. We talked about it a little bit at the, kind of looking into it. It's the junkyard. It's one of those, and the other, I think, is the nuisance process, so it's, it's really more for your information, but what we can. Or you can go and look up.
When you can look at the parking section, all the parking se- section, you can go to like about two to three different chapters and pick something out of each one. Put it on one.
Yeah.
Like what they're in violation of.
Yes, that you check.
Yeah, you attach that with your courtesy letter, you're gonna sue, yeah, that's a good deal. Very good.
So how do they follow up on that with the city of, of Hexley? Do they do the resolution to obey the nuisance, or after you've done the courtesy, what happens then?
And they, they don't rectify a certain, they can't supply those states or something, they have to say something.
Right, whatever the notice says, basically.
Well, typically, the trash was in the two point five G S spreadsheet. Give them an courtesy notice for this violation.
Final notice?
Sure.
And then what?
They don't rectify, they didn't citation, there was probably only one citation.
Yeah.
So.
And that's where we're getting bogged down, is in the citation. We don't wanna follow the citation process.
No.
So under the nuisance abatement, we would send them a notice, then give them time to clean it up another week or two weeks, and then if they don't, then, then, uh, they have, they can come in, do their due diligence. Right?
Yeah, they come in front of the council.
Come in front of the council and, you know, scream at us or whatever, and if we still tell them to clean it up, we give them a certain amount of time, week, two weeks to clean it up, and if they don't by then, then we give them, I think it's like a search warrant then.
But no, it's a civil citation, uh, the fusion of that is what to turn.
Well, but that's like municipal infraction on that side. We don't wanna do that. We just wanna do the nuisance abatement and just abate the problem. So we would just come in.
Hire somebody.
Hire a tow truck to come in, have them come in. You would, you would be there, there's gotta be an officer there, and it's, it's totally legal. It's, it's like ser- serving a search warrant, and, you know, there's nothing they can do. It's, it's all legal form.
And then we charge it to them.
And that should be granted by the, now the front.
You would never, you would, you would never ever do that step without the civil attorney being the driving force behind you. I mean, that's not something you're gonna, you're allowed in a couple of meetings as mayor of Cambridge, saying, we're gonna go ahead and do our.
Right.
And that the legal legal, the law dog is gonna be. A whose eyeball that, that.
I think you can, cause they've already had their, you've already given them their due diligence to come in and speak on it.
Can, can and should are two different words.
Is that what the lawyer suggested?
The nuisance abatement process of it, you know, it's when they, it's when they mention, I'll see you in court, that's when you get hold of the attorney, and that's when you gotta do that step.
But did the lawyer suggest using, going in?
So he's gonna send us over his forms.
Not yet. We don't know what, what process.
Okay.
He would like us to follow, yeah, that's what he's, that's what.
Still waiting for some information.
I think the courtesy notice is definitely gonna be part of it, and then.
Due diligence.
Maybe, yep. Well, the due jo, you're, you're giving people an opportunity for a hearing, clean, for the hearing before the council. That's what you're talking about.
Right, but after they don't clean it up after that, we can go in there and it, it's like, it's like a search warrant. It's a legal form. You can go in there with a tow truck and haul that stuff out of it.
But you need that, but you need that legal form.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of legal, but it would come all the way down to, nope, hook it up.
Hook it up and haul it out. Absolutely.
There was a present.
Was that the butterfly signature?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That was the end of that.
And that's the same thing. You still bill them. You know, they have like thirty days to pay for, we, we send them a letter of what it costs to rid their stuff, and they have thirty days to pay it, and then after that, we send a certified letter to the Story County Treasurer, and they assess it to the back of their property taxes. Sure, sure. All right. Further discussion on chapter fifty and one twenty-four?
Okay, those are just, uh, like I said, the one chapter concerns the, uh, junkyard, junk vehicle for a particular property, and that was kind of just to let you know what, like what those definitions are, um, what, what can be done with that, and I don't remember which one's which, and then I think fifty was just what the nuisance abatement chapter.
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll move forward with all of that. We've met with the city attorney since that work session, and he's moving forward with what the process, what the process is gonna be. There will be resolutions that will have to be approved by the councils, particularly if you're gonna assess something to somebody's taxes, so you're gonna be informed the whole, you know, all along the way. That was just to look on, look for a council to look into, um, so they know what we can and can't do.
Yeah, I'd look at parking also. All right.
Real quick, I guess.
Okay.
Um, nuisance, nuisance abatement with parking, does that include alleyways, or is that on?
So, you can, you can park in an alleyway as long as there's ten feet, I think, to get around them.
Well, they drive for somebody else's property. So, my neighbor perks his RV directly in the alleyway. So, the only way for the power company, if they need, was to drive through my property around her stuff.
Oh, why is that? Oh, why is it an alley? Is it an alleyway?
So, just curious, I mean, obviously, I don't have anything there right now, but if I do put something there, I don't want them to enter my property, because there's a camper park directly. So, you mentioned parking. So, is that part of it? Are alleyways our deal, or is that alliance still?
The alley's ours.
It's ours.
Okay.
You can't park in an alley. There's, there's something in there, but if there's ten feet to go around them, you can't, the parking lot's big enough to go around them. They can park right there, but there's not in your case. They'd be driving through your yard. I didn't know on the list.
Noted.
Any further discussion? Nuisance abatement, moving on to resolution number twenty-two dash ten.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, a resolution to establish traffic control device.
This is the study?
Well, no, I didn't think we were wanting a study. This is an actual resolution to put up stop signs at, okay, Adam, you've got the resolution, so it's. And the stop sign at the South Vine one.
So, the two.
Race and North, and South Race and Vine.
Yep, well, the two yield signs gotta have a resolution on them too. Gotta have a resolution on the yield signs.
You have to have a resolution on any traffic control device. Now, this is a change in code from what we did.
Can we amend twenty-two fourteen to add the yield signs?
No, it'll have to be a separate.
Do it next month.
Okay. So, on my assumption that we're, right, Maggie knows your resolution number.
Okay, so you wanted to move forward with this, or you wanted to do a study, because that's.
You wanted to put stop sign there?
Nathan was just talking about doing a study. That's what, what they had available.
Right.
For that up there.
Do we want to go ahead and place a sign forward with places stop signs, make that a three-way stop?
Yep.
And what's, what's? South Race and Vine? We need to get, we don't need a three. We don't need a three in there.
Yeah. There were two stop sign, well, or two places, so.
Race and Vine, we're gonna put one there.
The Race and Vine and South Race, or Race and North and South Race and Vine Street.
So, is it?
Exactly what you talked about.
That's what we talked about at the, yep.
I think that was the center and Vine.
No, 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 that's, that's what we just talked about.
Right, but at the work session, I thought we talked about the center and Vine.
Well, that is actually South Race.
Okay.
There. It's, it doesn't become center until the other side of that intersection.
Okay, perfect.
It's the same one we're talking about.
I'm standing by the motion, I think.
Five seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Then we'll do another one for the yield signs.
Well, you're gonna, you need to let us, you know, let us know what you, so that we can prepare a resolution, like for the next meeting, then.
Yep.
If there's.
Yep.
Do you want us to prepare a resolution?
Yeah, prepare a resolution for the yields at First and Second Mall.
Like, okay, so first, at which direction, I guess?
Um, north and south, north and south.
Yeah.
What the intersection was that again?
First and Sycamore.
Okay.
So, how do we go about positioning that sign coming from the west, going east to Ray Street, when that curve is so, so wide, so round?
Right, right there.
No, north end, go north end, up here by the duplexes.
Oh, oh.
The sign, when that curve is so rounded. How do we?
How do you make that a yield?
I, I don't know how you're gonna do it, but those vehicles are your problem.
Yeah, and you can't park, I think, within ten feet of a stop sign, is what it says, because you block the obstruction of a, of a corner when you do that. So, I'm kind of wondering if we shouldn't just go out and corduroy into the road, come out a couple feet, kind of square it up some, just put it in the road, put a barrel there, for the stop sign. Or put a post in there and just square that thing up a little bit.
Signs like way down, you know, stop sign head, and then you position it, and then, I think you're really gonna have to saw in that corner.
I think you're gonna have to push that further out in the road, to kind of square that up some. I don't know, you look at it. Or Joe, if you wanna look at it, see how, you know, that's pretty rounded.
I wonder if you almost put it on the curb off, you know, or it's in ninety, the other stop sign will bring that. Because then you might have a clear light of sight.
Yeah, but it's over quite a ways in, because it's so rounded. I'm saying you can come out in the road some. And we'll just throw some barriers in, or whatever dirt, I don't care, just something to maybe square it up. We'll make a get a dump truck, we need a dump truck.
Kind of change the way those stop signs work down there.
That's a pretty square corner right there still.
No, it isn't though. It isn't a square corner.
But they, they put it on the utility pole, the stop signs on the utility pole.
Yeah, that used to be, they used to, used to be on the curb right around our stop. But I changed it so when people come out there, they just, they didn't, yeah, that was years.
Okay. Good on that. Any further discussion of that? Moving on to mayor and council comments. Are there any comments?
Got a couple.
Okay.
Could turn into agenda items sometime in the not too distant future. I've been frequenting the streets of Cambridge at night in my walk-in rental. And, and we got a lot of dogs that are running around town at night.
Oh, one of them?
Seeing the cats, seeing the cats.
No.
Their costumes, cancer, it's kind of.
Well, that, that's good, so I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm gonna be looking really closely at this. I had a lady stalk me this morning when I was walking the dogs. Ripped me a completely second functional butt.
Okay.
Over my dog trapping in her yard. And the black dog I have running around and pooping there. I don't have black dogs, and my dogs don't leave the yard unless they're on a leash. And they poop in your yard, I pick it up on the spot.
Does she have proof?
She was crazy. So, I just said, I'm sorry you feel that way, we just didn't want, but I'm, I'm, she does have a point with regards to a lot of dog activities, I think. As we're looking at nuisance stuff, just, and I think it's mostly people who have moved in and have dogs or have spotted them for the first time they've ever heard. So, I'm looking at that. The other thing is coyotes.
Other thing is what?
Coyotes. Every night, I see coyotes, at least one, oftentimes as many as six or seven, as I'm walking around town, and I've never had that. Never had. You made it. I mean, it, it doesn't matter. I mostly, mostly see them from Fourth Street North, but I, I've seen it everywhere. I've seen it as far out as the, the car wash.
Sure.
See them on the bike trail all the time.
We've seen them on the ring for our house.
And that would be why you see no cats. Well, and it's, it's straight up true, they are cat eating machines.
So, are you complaining about them, or what? Where are you going with this?
Yeah.
Probably more of whether it's.
Are you concerned, you know, some people let Fluffy out once in a while, or Fluffy gets out, and I'm looking out for our constituents, or, and it's not gonna be limited.
Well, I think maybe a notice on Facebook or the city website is where, kind of a reminder about animal control laws, and then also.
But it is, it's bigger than just cats being out when you have coyotes. Um, I know we don't allow chickens in town, but I still follow the chicken groups, and you see it in Ames and stuff, where they just obliterate rabbits, and they obliterate the chickens in their poops and stuff, so coyotes become a problem. It's not just those that are out.
And, and earlier in the year when I was seeing so many, I thought it was because of the timber was so wet, because it flooded. Well, the timber is drying a lot more part right now, so there's no reason why they can't be back in the woods, and they're not.
Well, they've got, yeah, there's food. There's a food source. I don't know what you think you can do about coyotes, though.
Let people know.
Just let people know.
Just let people know.
Don't let your dog out.
Yeah. Don't let Fluffy out.
So.
The other point that the red spray paint house, everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
The pile of construction junk that's been sitting in their front yard for two years.
No, no, it's way more than that. Yeah, longer, four or five.
I mentioned. Okay, okay, I just went church, if she was on the list.
But there was a confusion, what do we charge them?
Okay.
Yeah, and then last on my list was school will begin the twenty-third of August, so watch out for all the.
Absolutely.
When does school begin? Sorry?
Twenty.
August twenty-third.
August twenty-third, okay.
We were thinking about putting a bus stop sign down there by the Methodist, since that is a stop down there now, um, both ends of the road.
How does that work? I mean, we have our thing where we put up stop signs and yield signs. If the school just wants, can we just go put one up, or do I?
Probably ask the church if they'd let, put one on the property. Why wouldn't they?
It's a street sign, so is there, I mean, does it, does the school have to come to the city?
Is bus stop signs required?
Is there a protocol?
Permission to?
I would assume so, because I think any, any traffic control devices.
Bus stop sign, and I think there should be some school crossing signs, because we do have a fair number of kids who walk.
Yeah.
And we should, we should identify school, school routes, so that people, on my end, as a school person, I can concentrate the movement of children on specific lines of drift, so they're not, you know, arterializing and going willy-dilly every day, dumbing where. It's safety. This is the route we want you walking home to get to your neighborhood, and then we can post school crossing signs at intersections along those routes. Is that, I mean, is that some, I mean, it kind of took it a little further than what maybe you were suggesting, but are you okay with me running with that on the school end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you have two bus stops for those kids? It seems like a lot of kids have to walk all the way from there.
I can almost guarantee you, what people tell me is, why didn't I come to them and make with this, because there's bus, bus routes are not.
Oh, okay.
I just had a meeting with them.
Well, so what I'll do is, and because he's a pretty cool dude, um, I will say to him, hey, look, we need to look at two bus stops for Cambridge. We've got enough kids. We can't have.
That are walking all the way down. Do you want to have any advice on, or?
Well, I could just tell you, they, they have to live so far from the school for, it has to be, it's a mile or a mile and a half for it to be them to give you another stop. So, if they're in city limits and it's not a mile away, then they're not gonna make another one.
And why?
That's just, I know that's what's in the code of, of where they have to provide transportation. So, because otherwise you get kids in town that say, well, I can't have the bus go over here and pick my kid up. I live this far out. Why can't we, why can't they stop at my house? Why can't they?
It becomes a safety issue in the fall and the spring during planting and harvesting season to have kids who are the maximum distance from the bus stop, making that walk. Honestly, I, I mean.
I, I, I would say, what I, what I had to do, Mike, um, way back when I was at a daycare and they weren't stopping at the center for us, I had to walk kids like three blocks down, is I had to go to the school board and ask to be put on the agenda of the school board about making another stop in the town.
Cool. Our school boards are just, school board means they're just hot for these days.
So, one of the things with Cambridge, we don't have sidewalks. So, maybe if we went to the school board and said, we don't have sidewalks.
Yes, yes, a safe place for them to, yes.
Okay. Sorry, that took up a little bit more time than I thought of. My apologies.
Um, I guess my comment, which I'm glad I double-checked, is we have a nine-one-one service board meeting tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday. I thought it was Tuesday. My days are almost done, but Wednesday, Wednesday, six-thirty, so I will be there.
You're, you're going? Did I sign up to be like a backup?
Yeah.
Right on.
When are you going, Taylor?
Wednesday.
Okay, um, will you stop in the office and you can take that, because I don't think we've sent that authorization yet, so you can take that with you?
Okay, yeah. Do you have a preference whether it's tomorrow or Wednesday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Please, and thank you.
Man, I'm quite the old guy. Good? Good, Barb?
I'm good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Maggie knows your adjourn.
Barb, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, news adjourned.